Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 23, 2018. We will salute to the flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve it?
Okay, all in favor. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion.
Sixteenth?
Yeah, it was the sixteenth. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, all in favor. Department head, committee chair, updates. We have the emergency management, William Catanze. You want to come up?
What I'd like to do tonight is to introduce the county director, Art Cleaves, who's going to talk to us about a new emergency-type phone system that were proposed for the town.
Okay.
Okay. Heather?
Chairman and secretary, thanks for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you about the emergency alert system that we've got. Before I do that, before I do that, I did want to tell you that we've got the formal declaration for the October windstorm. Remember, the last day of the month in October?
Yeah.
We had that very bad windstorm.
Yeah.
And Acton actually put in for about $13,000 worth of debris removal. So that should all be approved. We're just doing the RPA now, request for public assistance from FEMA.
Okay.
So that'll be in. And then I think there's some emergency protective measures that the town could get back as well to. So we'll be working closely with you to look at that detail.
Yeah, and that's, I didn't interrupt you, but that's extra kudos to your treasurer, because she is the one that, she's attended the EMA meetings and she's put in on behalf of the road commissioners and other bills. She takes the time to submit all that and gets the reimbursement, so.
Great.
And I should say that Bill Catanze does a phenomenal job with us as an EMA director, because he's always coordinating all of the activities. And if there are emergencies, he's always there for you. So that's very helpful. The emergency alert system that we've got now, I made some notes, because the system is quite elaborate. With it's something we purchased at the county level, so it does not cost the town anything. So it's free for your users to use it. And we'll set up admin accounts for you, so you can go in and use every aspect of the system. So it's a county-wide alert system. So if there's something bad that's happening, any 911 listed telephone, so any personal telephone that's a listed phone is automatically in the system, so we can alert any of the citizens in the town you can do. And you can do it independently yourself. If there's a particular emergency you want to notify people about, then you can do that. There's an opt-in for cell phones. So like my own cellphone, I put that in. And you go on and self-register, so the citizens can do that themselves. And you can advertise that on Facebook or any other medium that you can get to get the people to do that. So we don't do warnings very often, can tend to scare people. But if there is something significant, we would use that system to alert them. So it's a town-wide. You can also use it town-wide for non-emergency. If you have meetings and schedule things, the fire department wants to activate a particular group or other emergencies, you can use that system as well. And Bill can also activate it as well, too. It automatically interfaces with Facebook, Twitter, and websites, so you can populate that. And I know that social media is really key for reaching individual citizens today. We're not doing a great job at York County, but we're doing a better job on posting stuff on our Facebook, and those can be interlinked. But this system will match with that, so if people are following on Facebook, they'll see that alert. You can send it for anywhere. It's cloud-based. And those individuals that will be using it, that will put the alerts and warnings out, you can do it from the cellphone as well, too. So Bill could do it on the road, or Fire Chief Johnson could send something from on the road.
Okay.
So you would define target audiences. If you wanted to reach a particular part of the town, you can define that, a particular area, and you can put an alert and warning for that geographical area. You may not enact, and you might be more like town-wide, but you could geographically segment it down. So things that you might notify. If you have a situation where you need sheltering, need to bring people into the shelter, you could advertise that through the alert and warning system. You could tell everybody that that is the case, that the shelter is open. The other most unique feature about it that we've been looking for for a long time, and I've been at the business since 99, I've wanted to have a system where you could go in and register elderly or special needs individuals. So if, and they can self-register. So once you, once they go in, then they're identified, and then either any of the first responders could check on the person during an emergency. And they put the categories that they're concerned about in that registry. And again, it's all the individual family or the individual. So, you know, you can alert for a hazmat incident, severe weather warnings, tornadoes, and like that. So that might be the urgent things that you'd want to put out to an alert and warning system. The one we don't want to talk about is active shooter at a school, something like that. You can use that. And you can use it to notify your citizens of where they could meet families, where they could rendezvous, and that. So it's really unique features. We pay about $20,000 per year for the system at York County, but it's free to the towns as unlimited users, as many as you want to put in. You can have that many admin users for the system. I think that pretty much, oh, and then individual groups, if you had town meetings and stuff that you want to use the system for, you're certainly welcome to use it for that as well. I think, subject to your questions, I hope that explains what the system is for you.
So basically, if you're list, if you have a landline, you're already on
Yes.
911 list, you're in automatically. But otherwise, if you have a cellphone only, you have to
Register.
Register yourself.
Yep.
And they opt-out, the landlines?
Yes, and yes, you can opt-out as well, too, yeah.
Okay. And for the, just the town, what was I going to ask? So town notifications such as meetings, you could manage what sort of notifications you'd like?
Sure, yeah. This morning, the county manager announced that we were going to have a two-hour delay in start of operations. So he used the alert system. So my alert goes off and tells me that the county government's not starting until 10 o'clock. I went in anyway, by the way.
[laughing]
We didn't have a choice.
That way, if it's school-related and you don't have children, they can opt-out of school-related, no?
Exactly.
So they're not getting every, okay. That sounds like a great deal. Looking forward to it.
Mr. Catanze brought it to my attention, like, a week or so ago, when I asked if I could come up. I mean, I think it's a great benefit.
Yeah.
If the board decides to move forward, what would be the next step?
I'm sorry, say again?
If the board decides to move forward, what would be the next step?
You don't have to do a thing, because I've got one of the individual assistant director at the office is coming to the town to make sure that you're all in the system and you know how to use it. It's really easy to use. Even Art can use it, so it's pretty easy.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, there's no next step, then? Yep. I'm sure Ed would like that as well.
I think you'll just have to figure out admins, and we'll sit down and talk about how you want to do it.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add, EMA?
Nope, you know, we'll set the training up, come up and do it, and I think it'll be a great kind of thing.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, thank you. Old business, old patrol car.
So after the last meeting, I did contact the sheriff's department. I got confirmation on the 17th from Sheriff King that, okay, sounds good. Mitchell will get both towns a check, so.
Oh, okay.
That should be coming along shortly.
Job description.
So this particular job description, you guys have already seen, but you didn't officially vote on it. And I wanted to get it in our new book that you were working on. So this is the deputy code enforcement officer. This is, you've already gone through this line by line when we first started advertising the position. The only thing that I added to it, under the second page, the planning responsibilities, the same ending, same sentence that you have on the other ones, any and all other legal duties as requested by the board of selectmen or CEO pertaining to said position. And then I just added the date at the bottom. But this is the same one that was approved before the special town meeting.
Okay.
So if you could just officially accept it, we'll get that one done and move on to the next one.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the deputy code officer.
Job description.
Job description.
I'll second that. All in favor? And just initial one of them?
Oh, yeah, just one, please. And then, under that same line, with your approval, this will be the one that we move to next. This is the land use secretary. I just thought, it's two pages, so if you want to take it and review it, put together any questions, we can put that on the agenda for next week. And if you decide that you want the department head here to go through it line by line, we can do that. But that's just kind of in proof mode for now.
Okay, so deputy CEO, land use secretary.
So based on the conversation last week, that Ed gave his recommendation after interviewing the applicants, that it was his recommendation to restructure and move the current land use secretary into that position, drafted an ad. So the town of Acton is currently accepting resumes for a part-time office assistant to the code enforcement land use department. This position will require multitudes of cross-training and an impressive ability to multitask. The ideal candidate will have strong Word, Excel, and PowerPoint skills. In addition, he or she will possess excellent communication and customer service skills. This position will also require two evenings a month to attend the planning board meeting. Salary, the starting pay will be between $13 and $15 an hour with a maximum of 20 hours per week. And then it goes on to, say, the deadline is Friday, February 2nd. So we're running that to try to fill the position before we can do the shift. So the other thing that we really need to talk about is numbers and finances. I did sit down and meet with code enforcement. So the secretary, depending on experience, we listed it 13 to 15. That falls in between the, that falls in between the numbers that we've used with the other secretaries or office assistants walking into the building. So probably will be a start closer to 13, to keep them in line with the other positions, unless the board decides that they want to go higher. But if you decide to do that, it's going to affect everybody, you know, because we need to keep all the assistants kind of around the same hourly rate based on years of experience. The deputy, when you went to the special town meeting, you appropriated at $20 an hour. That's what you thought you were going to. We're looking at starting the position at $19 an hour for the rest of the fiscal year. And then as we start working on budgets over the next couple of weeks, you can talk to the code enforcement about what his plan is long-term. But that's where he'd like to see the Mrs. Charlin start at.
Mm-hmm, 19.
19. She's at $1,697 now, but of course, it's a different position. But that's the request. What are your thoughts? And there are, just so you know, I'm sorry, there is enough in both current budgets to cover those figures. I had the treasurer run the numbers based on 13 and 19, based on the special town meeting. 20 hours a week for the office assistant, that position will stay at no benefits. The deputy code enforcement will receive benefits, which is a switch of what you originally planned. You're essentially just swapping them out, so that she can do the training as well. 20 hours doing training as deputy code enforcement, and then 20 hours training the office assistant that will essentially be taking over her position.
Okay. So 19, yeah.
19, so, yeah.
For the, and she'll be working 40 hours?
We have it budgeted on up to 40 hours.
Up to, but not
Oh, up to, okay.
I don't know what, you know, I know that
So you may not need to train the other person all 20 hours?
I mean, I would, right, I'd like to think that, I mean, she'll get her started on some things, she or he get her started on some things, and they'll be able to work somewhat independently. But in the beginning, as you know, it's going to be brand-new, depending on, at this point, no one's applied for the position, so it just got posted. And I've reiterated that the board's focus on this deputy position is coming to compliance with those properties first.
Yes.
Right?
Yep. That's what, that's what the position was created for.
Okay. All right. So I'll let you know when we get some office assistants in to interview and determine who wants to sit in on them.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got that marriage policy.
Yeah, a little over. Marriage policy.
So you looked at this policy last week and made the one change that you spoke of.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Hebo-Hibo, follow-up with Lois Micho.
I don't see Lois here tonight, but last week, she spoke in regards to Hebo-Hibo Road and some concerns that she had regarding a possible conflict of interest. I did speak to the land use attorney, Mr. Lankowski, and I had him re-watch the tape so that he could see for himself, make sure that he was getting all of the information. He indicated to me that he reiterated that there was no conflict of interest with his Hebo-Hibo opinion, and he stands behind it. He's, you know, not to say that there wasn't a situation possibly, let's just say, with Mrs. Michu and a dog bite 15 years ago, but that would have no direct conflict on the recommendation that he made on Hebo-Hibo Road and the public easement. So he stands behind what he says, and basically said that, you know, if the board had anything further, to let him know, but he doesn't, you know, there's no conflict that he's aware of, so.
Okay. Well, if she needs anything further, she can always schedule something with us on a Thursday night or something.
Okay, she wants to give you more detail?
I feel like there's something there that she wanted to talk about.
Okay.
So. Flat Ground Road, follow-up with Carol Kamazubamwe.
Did I spell it right? Awesome. Proud of me for getting it on there right?
Like, where'd she go? Kamazubamwe.
You did it. Okay, so, just going to put it all out there, okay? So, this is where, again, Mr. Jolinkowski believes that we stand with Flat Ground Road, and we reviewed additional documents. Carol has a valid point when she says that in order to close or discontinue a road, you have to do one of two things. What she said last week, you have to either make a record of it at the registry and file it a particular way, or you have to notify all residents. Now, Mr. Lankowski has verified that he's checked the records in Alfred, and the town in 1960 did not record it at the registry. So we know that wasn't done. There would be a record of it. So, the question is, were all the residents notified? That's something that he believes that we're never going to know unless some of those residents come forward. So at this point, you're looking for residents that would have been property owners in 1960 that can say to the board of selectmen that they were never notified, and that, you know, that assessing records can be verified. Depending on how many or who comes forward to the board, he will offer his next opinion in regards to a possible compromise or what should happen from here. But legally, they had to be notified. Were they notified is the question. It's up to you to prove that they weren't. And really, the only way that that can happen at this point is if there are residents on there that could tell the board otherwise. So
Make sense?
Yes, I mean, I wasn't alive in 1960, so. So if I, I'm trying to think if anybody that is a resident on that road, I think the only people old enough are my parents. What if we don't have proof?
Well, then, you know, we can go back to Mr. Lankowski and tell him that.
Okay.
And, you know, it'll be up to the board to decide what they want to do.
I would like to defer to my dad and find out. I mean, he's here tonight, if you have anything to offer about that.
Dennis Long, obviously, 58 years ago is a long time, and so there's nobody alive to this date that would be able to verify that.
How about Mr. Snyder? Does she, she didn't own property, then?
No.
Okay.
No. The, one of the issues with this, as far as I can see, is I don't understand why it's always the burden on the people when there's clear documentation. Your letter from MMA, that you guys got from MMA, said either you need to discontinue the road, stop that process, or maintain the road.
Is that the letter that starts by saying if the residents weren't notified properly? That's the March letter that came about a month after Lankowski's?
That was a couple of years ago, whenever it was.
Yeah, and I did, I read that one to him today as well. But the first sentence in that one says that if the residents weren't notified, then you're correct, you need to do one of these two things.
I'm just wondering, who would notify the residents and who would have a record of that notification?
And that's the thing, I mean, it would have been the selectmen, the assessors at that time. I mean, 1960, it's hard to say what they, you know, what method they used. You know, it could be anything. I mean, like Joe said, I mean, we're probably never going to know. The only reason that he says that the burden is on the residents of Flat Ground Road is because he believes that based on history, everything that's happened since then, that the town has treated it as a private road. So that's why he thinks that the proof needs to come from that side. But again, in all fairness, he also said that the board, you know, has the right to, if they can't find the proof, do as they so choose, so.
And following with that, I mean, anybody knows, I mean, there's nobody alive that would be able to testify to this. But on the other hand, there's no proof in Alfred that the town did what they were supposed to do, even if people were notified. It was never recorded.
And again
And the court case that we gave
Was one of the two had to be done. That's what Lankowski says, and this is not me, this is me passing it on, so don't [laughing].
Right.
He says that one of the two had to happen. Either they had to record it, or they had to notify. They didn't have to do both.
It has to be recorded.
Okay.
I think you'll find that it has to be recorded. Because history, at least in this town, would tell you, with the different roads in town since way back in the 1800s, they were all registered with a county. Because what they had to do until the county get out of the road business a few years back, when the town wanted to discontinue a road, for example, they had to petition the county to discontinue it. So they had to get the county's permission, all right? And with the Flat Ground Road, the county is, that was a county road, okay? When the county get out of the road business, we have one now that we call the county road that joins Mills Road to Fox's Ridge. When the county get out of the road business, they turned all these roads over to town. And I honestly believe that just because the town didn't do something properly, which we know they didn't, because it's not recorded. They didn't do that right, and who's to say that they did it right to consider it a private road? We have all kinds of roads in town, there are town roads that we accepted as town roads, and somebody's opinion, I guess, doesn't really mean that much, other than the facts that we've presented you, the people, your people. And I appreciate you looking at it.
One of the, hold on, Dennis. One of the things that he says in there, and we'd have to look into it, but if, you know, if you looked at, and that might be a piece of information that the board takes into consideration as they move forward with it. But if there are all of the other roads, or other roads that the town has discontinued or stopped, you know, you can show that, you know, let's just say there's 10, and I have no idea how many roads there are that's been discontinued in Acton, but if nine of those have been recorded, and that's the general practice, then
They have.
You know, that might be, you know, weight in making your decision on the next step. But, you know, so that's a good point to say, but
It is, it seems like it should be recorded somewhere.
We'd have to look, you know, we'd have to look into it and see if
Go ahead, Joe.
I just want to add
You have that in someone here?
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I had a death in the family today, so I didn't bring my folder.
Oh.
But I know when I was doing my research, Edgecombe Road was discontinued properly, and it was either right before or after. I don't remember the, it's like, to me, anything like 1960 is so long ago. But it was in that timeframe, and it was, and in the folder I had for Edgecombe Road, there was the notices that they sent to all the property owners and stuff like that. And I got that from the town. So I guess, in turn, if they had it for Edgecombe Road
Why don't they have
That I was able to obtain with a request for information
And we certainly have documents back
I could submit a request for information for Flat Ground Road, and, you know, because it's the similar situation, so.
Yeah, there's definitely no notices in there on Flat Ground Road, I'll tell you that. I mean, you can come look at the files, you're welcome to, but we've got it all the way back. I mean, every, you know, all original documents are in there, there's nothing in there
Yeah.
Showing that, so. Do, I mean, we could send her packet over to Lankowski. I didn't get a copy of it, so I wasn't able to reference it when speaking to him. Let him look at it.
It was basically the stuff from the town
It was all that was in that folder.
In the Edgecombe Road folder.
Which he has, the board, the last time, had me send him everything in there.
And you think it was around the same timeframe?
I think it was a little bit before Flat Ground Road, before 1960. For some reason, I have the 47 or something like that in my ad, but I'm not
Okay.
Don't quote me, because my mind's a little jumbled tonight.
And Joe's the first one to say that it's possible they didn't notify it. I mean, you know, and if you find that all other roads were in the registry except for this one, I mean, there are other options, but the first one was, is there anybody that could possibly come forward and say?
There aren't anybody, isn't anybody, so.
Okay. What do you want, where do you want to go from here?
There's only one more thing I'd like to say.
Okay.
The other thing that I'd like to say is, the law has been clear for 200 years. There's three things the town can do with a road. They can abandon it, they can discontinue it, and they can close it. And you look through your records, and you'll see that any time they've closed the road, the state law says and lets its date specified, 10 years is the most it can be closed. And this has been on the books for a long time. And the town closed the road. That was the word in the warrant article.
That's right.
And somebody says, Joe's opinion was that the town meant to discontinue it. But the trouble is, once again, there's nobody around. And so all you have to do is base your information on what's in front of you, and that's documents. This is why the town keeps records. They use the word "closed," and that means the town still owns it.
What year was that?
The town does have a 50-foot easement through there, you know.
What year did they do that?
1960, March 12.
Okay, so that's
And he's correct, the warrant article does say "closed." I can't, I don't know if the 10-year statement he made is, you know, we'd have to look into that.
That's something to look into.
And those, we pulled the original warrant books, and Dennis and I did together, handwritten warrant articles, is what Mr. Lankowski saw. I mean, you know, and you, and I hate to say this, because I'm not one to encourage it, but you can always get another opinion. You can, you know, go back to him with the original packet, ask him to look at it again. You know, I would encourage you at this point for you guys to meet with him and hear him, because it's not the first time it's come up. And he does think there are some, you know, some ways around it, and questions why the town plowed it for so many years. There's a lot of variables to it, so.
Right, the town plowed it for, close to 40 years after they closed it.
So maybe a workshop with him
It maintained it.
You know, at this point, because, you know, they do, you know, it continues to come up, and it's hard to kind of relay it back and forth, but
Well, I'm going to die someday, and probably people will drop it, but until that happens, so probably every couple of years, it will be
It just seems like it should have the same files that Edgecombe Road has to have done it correctly.
Right, and it
And that doesn't sound like we have that.
So anyway, I don't know if you have anything else, but
I just want to thank you for looking into it, and I appreciate, you know, you guys
We'll keep working on it.
Keep working on it, and do what's fair to the residents on that road, you know, because it is quite a hardship.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you.
So what do you want to do from here?
Schedule a call with Joe and
You want to have
Have the Edgecombe Road files handy when we do that.
Can we look into any other roads that have been switched over to kind of see, you know?
So any, you want to look at roads that have discontinued?
Yeah.
Find out what process they used?
And make sure they did it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some, you have a list of roads that I can start on? I mean, I wouldn't
Oh, I don't know.
The road committee has a list of discontinued roads.
Okay.
There we go.
So if we can pull some of those randomly, see what we have, compare it.
Yeah, just a few, yeah. Doesn't have to be a ton, but
Okay, and we'll invite Dennis and Carol in when we have the conference call.
You guys want to
Do you hear that, Dennis? You good with that, Carol?
You hear that, Carol?
We're going to invite you, and we're going to schedule a conference call, and we'll bring you in when we speak to Mr. Lankowski. Let me see what I can find for discontinued roads, cross-reference what we have on file, including Edgecombe, and we'll go from there. All right, that's all I have on Flat Ground Road.
Okay.
Looks like Mr. Murray's ready for his spot.
Yeah.
New business.
Just remember to state your name back at the microphone for people at home.
Oh, I did, thank you. Is this, this, because I made copies for them as well? Is this, this, because I make copies for them as well, okay, I'll, thank you, that's okay, I'll, we'll recycle.
My name is Arnold Murray, I live at, uh, three eight nine Langley Shores Drive, um, I'm here representing the Ad Hoc Committee for Actin Private Roads, the reason that this was formed was, uh, state law changed, uh, I think it's Title twenty-three, Chapter thirty-one oh five, um, Section thirty-one oh six, which now permits the towns to, um, spend money on, uh, private roads that prevent storm runoff and pollution from re- reaching lakes, and, um, so that's why we were formed, um, and I notice it's already out on, on, uh, social media, and, uh, we are not trying to pave roads, or all this other stuff that they're, they don't even know what they're talking about, and they jump into conclusions. Um, the, this road committee put together a spreadsheet, I don't have a copy for everybody, but, what we did is, we went out and we tried to identify all the private roads in Acton, and we came up with, according to this, there is a hundred and twelve, there's a hundred and forty-four roads in Acton, forty-four roads, I believe, are town roads, and the, uh, rest are private roads, but some of the roads I have on here, I know they're just driveways, and, um, some of the roads we came up with was Andrews Island, which is, nobody's, there's no road to there, but I mean, there is a, a, a road called Andrews Island, um, an address, per se, so I took a ten percent error rate, and I come up with a hundred and ninety-eight private roads, and we also titled, uh, I mean, totaled how many homes are on these private roads, and it comes up to the number of dwellings on this road to, now, these figures are all approximate, give or take, I mean, I, this, I haven't done this, just roughly, thirteen hundred and fifty-three homes on private roads, three hundred and one, roughly, residents on them roads. We went, we had a fellow go out and actually drive all the roads that he could, he could drive, and he came up with, um, lengths, how long each private road were, was.
I'm just, I just have a quick question, you said there are thirteen hundred and fifty-three homes, but three hundred and one residents?
Yeah, all them other homes are private homes, they're, they're-
Second homes?
Huh? Yeah, like second homes?
Second homes.
Yeah.
Vacation homes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, it's like a thousand, but it is thirteen hundred and fifty-three homes on private roads.
Okay.
Um-
Only three hundred and one?
We come up with, what we did was, he was able, the fellow that went out was able, we were able to get mileage on, uh, seventy-nine of the roads, uh, nineteen was snowed in that he couldn't get on, and we couldn't measure, and like I say, this is all close, and we came up with twenty-six point eight-eight miles of private roads, now, in the, um, from what I get, from what I've done in looking at, um, the roads in Acton, uh, we have, uh, what was I gonna say? Oh, I don't know, well, anyway, um, there's approximately two thousand homes in Acton, and there's approximately thirteen hundred, uh, homes on private roads, that comes out to like sixty-five percent of the tax revenue is coming from the private roads, now, if you take, I mean, we know that the lake properties are assessed at much value, I was told that the, um, the amount of, um, income the town gets from, uh, there is seventy to eighty percent of it is from people on private roads. So, this, what we're trying to do here, with this, what we did, was trying to get some help from the town to maintain private roads, there are so many, and they are, uh, polluting, well, hopefully they're not, uh, just for a figure, uh, in the fifteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, um, town report, there was, uh, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, uh, dollars, uh, projected for road maintenance for the north and south, and a hundred and thirty-five thousand appropriated for sand, salt, and the maintenance of the shed, that's six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, you divide that by forty-four miles, and it comes out to fourteen thousand five hundred dollars a mile, now, private roads don't spend that, but we have to maintain our private roads. In two thousand eight, there was a watershed survey done around Great East Lake, and, and since that time, they've done Wilson, Horn Pond, they've done almost all the lakes in the area, uh, last fall, two thousand seventeen, the area around Loon Pond and that area, Wendy Garland had told me that they had done, um, watershed surveys done there, but they hadn't got the final results yet, tabulated, as to what, but I'm gonna speak about my road, because I know about my road, which is Langley Shores Drive, and, uh, just to preference this, this is a, a report that came out from the federal government in two thousand nine, I think it is, and it's about non-source point pollution, and it's about Moussum Lake, and not many people realize that, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-eight, the state of Maine declared Moussum Lake, um, impaired, and they put it on a danger list, and this is the success story of how the three nineteen non-point source pollution has brought that back and, and brought it off the endangered species list, or whatever you want to call it, and this was done by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in Washington, this is one from, this says camp roads, highways for pollutions in our backyard, this is from the Maine DEP. The watershed surveys, when they were done, identified all areas of erosion around the lakes and everything else, and on our road, we were identified as dumping sixteen ton, uh, six tons of sediment in the lake annually, now, and, uh, we found out that Langley Shores Drive runs along the water, and there's a big watershed up here, well, that watershed is roughly fifty-two acres, so let's say fifty acres, all that water coming down over there had to cross Langley Shores Drive, and one inch of water over one acre is one point two million gallons of water, so when we did this watershed survey, we teamed up with Joe Anderson from York County Soil and Water, Wendy Garland from DEP, AWWA, Linda Shire, and we put together a proposal for a three nineteen grant, which is non-point source pollution grant, and, uh, we had to, when Joe engineered the road, we had to pave part of it, we had to put in culverts to catch the, I mean, catch basins to catch the water when it come down, we, our, our culverts were the old, um, corrugated metal with no armoring on the ends, and trucks had gone over the edge, it had collapsed the, the, um, the culvert, so they weren't, they weren't armored, so we put, they put through a, a thing, a, a grant for us to pave the roads, put in the catch basins, and we had a seven year, no, it wasn't a seven year, maybe five-year plan to replace all the culverts, armor all the culverts, grade the road, bring in fill, we needed to bring in fill because we were down to hard pack, we had wrote rocks like this sticking up in the road, uh, so we had to do all that and crown the road, now, we did that back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, since that time, we signed a thing with the Maine DEP saying we would maintain all this, so every year, we have to go out and hire somebody to come in and grade the road, what we do is, we hire somebody that comes in, and they actually grind the road up, loosen the topsoil up of it, they grade it into a crown, and they compact it, we have to clean the culverts, we have to sweep the sand off the tied hills.
I'm just curious, um, that sounds like it costs a lot of money.
Well, I, like, like I said, just say to you, you, you pay, you pay fourteen thousand five hundred dollars a mile, our budget for a year is between seven and nine thousand dollars.
So my question here is, with the, would you say a hundred and ninety-eight private roads?
No, no, ninety-eight private roads.
He was at a hundred and fourteen, he took ten percent off.
Okay, um, in this warrant you're proposing for a hundred and fifty thousand, how do you, who determines which roads receiving it for money?
Well, if, 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 the warrant relates back to the, the state law, re- reverts back to thirty-one oh six, and it says that if, um, there's a whole codicil in there of what you have to do to, to, to make it, you have to be a road association that's been formed by their laws, um, it's not, every road can come up, you have to have been organized as a, a road association with the state of Maine, well, there's no clearing house for, you can't go around here, and you couldn't go to Jennifer and ask her how many towns have, um, road associations, because there's no, there's no clearing house, you have to, you have to start calling around to get them, I mean, that's how we got the ones, we talked to people on other roads, and we got names from other people, that's how we got the, the quantity of roads, but it's not something that you're just going to, what's, the way it, well, the way it works, if you read it, it, the, the statutory reserve fund is something that we have to come to you people and propose, this is what we do, I can tell you from what private is, private is, what our maintenance is every year, we have to clean out them storm drains, like I say, we sweep the sand off the hill, we grade the road, and, and, and we're not asking for the whole thing, we're asking for some of the things that we, we do, I mean, we, there's over thirteen million dollars worth of assessed property on my road.
How'd you come up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, we-
I guess maybe you should turn the question around.
Well, we, we took, originally, what we did was, we took the, um, number of, we were going to go by mileage, we were gonna ask for a, a dollar a foot, for, for the mileage of private roads to be reimbursed, and that was deemed not, uh, not in keeping with the law, um, the amount per foot, because the way the law reads, well, this is what the attorney said, the way the law reads is, is you can pay for repairs, pay with, to repair a private road, so it doesn't pollute, and we have to do that every year, because if you don't crown the road, the water doesn't shed right, it don't shed to the ditches, it doesn't shed to the runoff areas, and you need that to go in there, otherwise, it just goes right into the lake, so you have to have, there's, in that, that law, that thirty-one oh six, it says you have to have a watershed, a watershed survey done, you have to be formed under that, that statue, uh, there's all kinds of things, so it's only organized, right now, there's only organized roads that can apply.
Okay.
But the reason we came up with that, we were going to go with the mileage, we were gonna come in and ask if we could get a dollar a mile back for every private road, and what we did is, we totaled up the private roads, and we did the five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, and come up with a thing, and we come up with that figure, and the idea was to afterwards, that this figure, this, this fund, from what I gather, I know, what I've been told, the fund is there, and you have to apply to it, and you take it out, it just stays there as a fund, it's not something that-
And it's strict stipulations, just to protect the quality of water that the road is on.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, these, these things, I mean, Moussum was declared, you, you, you're protecting your, the property values of the people that own the houses to pay taxes, if the property value goes down on the house, down goes your taxes, so that's what we're trying to do.
I don't know, other-
Do you know of any other towns that are, have done this, um, and how it would be set up?
No, this, this road, I mean, the road ordinance that changed, I mean, it just changed, I don't, recently, I just found out about it recently, I mean, I can tell you it was done on the hundred and twenty-seventh legislature year, and I don't know what year that was, but, uh, that was the year that they changed it, before, it said you couldn't spend money on private roads, but they realize now there is a public purpose in protecting the water quality, so that the, the price stays up, and we're not, you know, polluting your, I mean, it's got nothing to do with, you know, like paving a road and all that stuff, it's, it's not, what we're trying to do is to help with the maintenance of the roads that have been organized, and this fund will, would just draw from it as, say we come before you and say that here's our expenditures for this year, what would you help us with?
And it would have to just pertain to water quality?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, then you would, you would, uh, but I mean, it's, I mean, you gotta, the, the people, you know, need to some-
I hear you.
Get money back from what they're doing, I mean, they, this, the times, I know, the state law in Connecticut now is, if you pay a thousand dollars in property taxes as a non-resident, you can vote, it's done in, in, in the states of New Jersey, along the coast, non-residents are getting to vote, and, uh, in Colorado, in the ski countries, where there's a lot of people, condo people and everything else, it's moving, I mean, it's like taxation was rep- about representation, we don't have, the people on private roads don't have any say in what's going on, and it's just, you know, this is a way that you could, you could give back to the people, and I think, I think a lot of people would, uh, would think it's right, it's a just thing to do, and all we're asking you for is that, you know, you put this back into, in front of the people at a town meeting, and, and let them decide, you know, and, you know, people have said to me before, when I was down here at the town hall years ago, you know, that, um, oh, uh, all you knew was a private road when you bought it, well, when I came here in sixty-three, there was no such thing, as last year, Maine just passed a law, and I can tell you what it is, in the hundred and twenty-eighth legislature, uh, Section thirty-three, MRSA seven, uh, one seventy-three subsection six, now, by law, you have to tell people when they sell your home-
That's true.
That it's a, that's a private road, before, they just, the, the real estate wanted to-
Sell the house.
We see that.
Sell the, sell the property, and, uh, so, all we want to do was just try and work together to-
So what's our next step? So, if I may, so the first step, in my opinion, would be, and this is, um, it's to have your attorney look at the warrant article, I mean, in any case, anytime an outside citizen brings a warrant article, you know, the first thing that selectmen have to do to make sure is the legal article, now, clearly, based on the way that it's written, you can tell an attorney wrote it, and, um, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions after the meeting, but, um, so that'd be the first thing, send it over, let your attorney review the statutes, and make sure it's a legal warrant article to put on, on a town warrant, and then maybe, um, give you a week or so to review it and come up with a list of questions, and bring them back next week with a follow-up.
Okay.
Okay, and then you'll advise us what our next step would be for-
They will.
Yep, yep.
We have to make sure it's, it's legal for them to put on a warrant, so that's really step one.
I understand that.
And then give them a chance to kind of take it all in and read- And then give them a chance to kinda take it all in and read, read through the lines, and I'm sure they'll come up with additional questions. But let's see what the attorney says first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment.
My name is Chuck Gregory, I live on Asbury Lane, near Baldes Lake. Actually, I have three different points I'd like to talk, some of these things came up tonight, if, if you don't mind.
I don't, just so you know, um, maybe you don't know, we have a three-
Yes, I know, that's why.
Okay.
We'll get going. The first one is cable, uh, we, we talked briefly about it with Jennifer, um, we'd like to find out more about how we can introduce getting another cable company coming in to Acton versus just Metrocast or American Broadband, whatever it is now.
And I did have it on, on my notes, asked them to put it under Old Business. You and I spoke after the meeting, so it wasn't officially on the meeting, so just real quick, we, I did speak to Spectrum and Time Warner, um, and I'm not sure why, and you're, you're welcome to make the same calls, but what they told me today, management, was that they were not interested in coming to a town that already had a franchise cable in it. I mean, I, I talked about, you know, that people may be unhappy, or they may be looking for cho, you know, choices, or they don't want a monopoly with one company. They told me straight out that they were not interested in coming to a town, a rural town like Acton or Chapley, um, if they already had a franchise in place. So I would recommend at this point, if you can find a cable company that would be willing to come out here and, and speak with the board or be interested in, but they just showed no interest in it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure why, but they-
If you could provide me with a telephone number of who you spoke to-
Sure, I'll get that for you.
Um, second thing is, we had the emergency management thing here, made me think, um, do, do you know if the county has anything where if you have elderly people who may have, suffer from like Alzheimer's or dementia, do they have any kind of a bracelet program? Or could they look into that so that if somebody wanders off into the woods and can't be found, that, you know, they have a, basically a homing device that um the emergency management can follow up with?
That's a good idea.
Okay. And my last thing is, been here for a couple of weeks, it seems like there's a lot of issues with roads and maintenance of roads and taking care of them, and wondering what the relationship is between the Board of Selectmen and the road commissioners, their job descriptions, their budgets, um, you know, how money is split up between the two commissioners, and what they're be using for, for summer versus winter, those kinds of things. Are there any kind of documents like that that you can make available?
A little more specific, you wanna know about the relationship between the select board and the commissioners?
Well, the commissioners report to you, right?
Well, they were elected by the town.
But they report to you?
No.
No. It depends on who you ask. There, there is-
What does the law say?
There is a section in, in the Maine municipal manual that talks about the Board of Selectmen having the same authority in certain areas as the road commissioners, but I, I don't believe you'll find anybody that tells you that the road commissioners, they report to the, to the townspeople, just like the selectmen report to the townspeople, they were elected.
Okay, are, are there any requirements for them to fill, do things like budgeting?
There are statutory requirements.
Okay.
There are statutory requirements.
Are those types of things available to us?
Yep, we can certainly show you what their statutory requirements are. Budgets and all that are public information, you could come in and get copies of, of any of that budget, so what they spend.
What about contracts with private contractors? Do they have, do they have those?
The selectmen enter into contracts, but they don't have any, there's no, um, all of our road maintenance and road plowing are done through the road commissioners and through hourly employees or independent contractors, but there's no, they don't sign contracts with them.
So an independent contractor could just start, you know, if the road commissioner says that they can just start plowing?
If they have proof of liability insurance and workers comp, and they meet the other requirements, and that's who the road commissioner chooses to use for a particular portion of town, the selectmen have always allowed them that, their own authority to choose who's gonna maintain the roads.
Okay, falling back to what Arnie was just talking about with the great ponds and, and the responsibility of keeping them clean from salt and sand and those kinds of things, are there requirements that the private contractors have to, to meet to make sure that they're not doing pollution to the, to those?
I'd have to look into that, do you guys know?
I don't think so.
I'd ask the road commissioners maybe to come to the next meeting and answer some of your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get you that other meeting, other number.
I asked last week, uh, a couple of issues about the road committee, uh, what the selectmen were gonna do, and um I was hoping that we'd have some answers tonight. Both of you came to the road committee meeting last week, and uh we made, made some recommendations on um the road dam, for example, and the road ordinance. When do you think that you guys would have a decision whether or not you're gonna put this stuff forward to town meeting?
We haven't met as a full board yet with, Ed's been out, but we, we do need to talk about it at a four o'clock workshop.
So hopefully next week, we will be able to-
Give an answer?
Let's hope so. It's not snowing or icing or anything like that.
With the, with the road, the road ordinance, um, I talked to Kenny about the road ordinance and the planning board, how would it, would affect them. So I gotta meet with Kenny tomorrow, talk to him a little bit, and they, and he's put me on your agenda for the planning board, uh, cuz I'd like to get their opinion on what their thoughts are and needs might be, you know, with the road ordinance. You know, there, there, there's a lot of different issues dealing with roads, so um we'll get their opinion and, and hopefully I can give it to you next week.
Do you have a draft of the proposed changes? We could share with the road commissioners and the, and Ed-
We can get you on it, it's just eliminating-
Just so I can email it to them ahead of time?
Things. Yeah. Um, when are they meeting, the planning board, I don't see that it's on here.
I, I, Kenny told me-
The first and third generally?
Uh, tomorrow, Thursday night.
And you're on the agenda?
He said it was gonna be unless he changes his mind tomorrow, cuz he doesn't like my attitude, I don't know, he might kick me out.
What about the road committee, did they set up another meeting yet?
No.
Okay.
So they're meeting this Thursday?
That's how I understood it.
Planning board is the first and third.
Okay.
So that's right.
So, uh, so I'll come back next week.
Yeah.
Cuz I know, like, when we talked the other night at the road meeting, it's very important to keep the class A roads, I believe, uh, but there's a lot of wiggle room with the existing roads and the new roads and development roads and, you know, I mean, there's still a lot to talk about, probably. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Ken Winn, I live in Thirty-Fifth Street and part of the Tattle Street.
I'm sorry, Ken?
Ken Winn, W-I-N-N.
Okay.
And I just wanna, uh, maybe a little elaborate, a little more of what Arnie was talking about. I, I bought my house in two thousand, the town used to pay, plow the roads in the winter, and then they would, uh, you know, grade it in the spring and fall, not grade it, but they would yuck rake it. And a lot of this is on the road, we used to drag it just to get it cleaned and so forth, and so the town took care of that, and then it was discontinued. You know, now, right now, we pay, I, you know, I pay like two hundred and twenty-five dollars additional a year to do it, and we got the road in pretty good shape now. And in terms of pollution, we had a big problem, the first part of Tattle Street was going into the cove there. The dust was just horrendous, even the people had to close their windows on really hot days because the dust would be going. So someone from the DEP, I don't know it was a woman's name, but she did come down and said, there is a problem here. So, and what he's saying, we're trying to do is just hopefully get some sort of help with the town that we all pay for, it's just, we're not trying to hurt anybody, we just wanna keep the road from deteriorating and maybe give us a little ease, we pay, all pay our taxes, and um, but it also helps because of the lake, and um, so I just wanted to just emphasize that, it's, we got some help and then it discontinued because of the state or whatever, how it was done. But um, that's all I'd like to just mention, so um, these are road associations, could use it, we are an association, some would have to form, but uh, as I say, just, just to help out, that's what we're primarily looking for, to kinda ease the burden on us, cuz we pay additional over our taxes, you know, we pay anywhere from, you know, I think it's two twenty-five, and some pay a little less, a little more, um, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joe DiOrio, I'm the road agent for Lakeside Drive, uh, and I've got a question on the snow plowing on our road. Up to this year, or up to last year, uh, the town was plowing part of Buzzell Road, down to, I believe it was number five hundred Buzzell Road, and now all of a sudden they stopped plowing, they stopped at the triangle of Buzzell and um, going down towards Langley, the, the triangle right there, they stopped plowing right there. I heard through the grapevine, the reason was because they had no place to turn around. Well, they've been turning around all these years, whether they turn around at five hundred Buzzell Road, which was the first residence, or further down the road, it's just making a hardship for us because, you know, we have to get someone to plow that, it's only a tenth of a mile, but we have to, we have to maintain that now, and legally, I understand that we're not allowed to maintain a, a town road for liability reasons, so what do we do? Why all of a sudden do they stop plowing that section?
Popular, popular topic.
Yes.
It wasn't because of the turnaround, that's for sure, you wanna explain to them what?
It was, it came down to not, being unable to read the deed correctly of where the actual town road stopped.
Well, why is it a few years ago, they posted this, a little sign on one of the telephone poles, end of town road, then all of a sudden that sign was taken down? So they knew that was part of a town road.
It's, it's not gonna be a, a well-liked answer, but honestly, as the selectmen change, they, they, they reinterpret things differently, and they instruct the road commissioners certain ways, and they get different opinions from the attorneys, they relook at it, I mean, it's like the flat ground, I mean, we, we've gone, you know, over this and over this, and it depends on who looks at it. I mean, some think it can be plowed all the way down, it's a matter of interpretation, what direction the board wants to go in. You know, speak to your road commissioners, they have the information.
Is that Scott's side?
Yeah, and he says he doesn't know where the, um-
Right, and we had, we had the attorney look at it again to determine where the road actually stopped, so we could figure it out.
Actually, Buzzell Road starts much further down the road.
Right, supposedly it stopped by the, who's, the farmer they kept referring to.
Do you remember?
Buzzell Road supposedly stops at Foley Way.
There was a farmer's barn or something they were looking for.
Dennis had told us, Dennis had told us about it. Yep.
And the same thing, and the attorney basically said to the town, unless you wanna pay for a survey, I can't give you an opinion on exactly where it ended. But apparently, for X amount of years, they all believed and agreed that it ended somewhere, and they plowed to that point, something happened and they changed their mind.
Well, I understand Buzzell Road starts at the schoolhouse, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, why don't they do all of Buzzell Road, and why do they choose just to do part of Buzzell Road?
Selectmen changed, changed their minds and said not to get down there, I don't know how many years ago it was.
Two?
Two, it's only been two years.
Are you interested in taking a ride down?
Sure.
Taking a look?
I mean, I, I have, and, you know, I'm not, but yeah.
I haven't been down in a while.
Yeah, I'll get down with you.
Okay.
You know, we'll look into it, and we have, I mean, we've, we've, guess it's gonna come down to a-
It's a tenth of a mile.
It's a tenth of a mile, and we're gonna have to get a-
It's a tenth of a mile to the first residence.
First residence.
Which is on the right side, right?
Yes, the trailer on the right side, yeah.
That's where he used to turn around.
Right. That's the way they always turn around.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to announcements, uh, we're looking, the planning board is looking for an alternate to be on their committee.
Deadline is, uh, we posted it, January, Tuesday, January thirtieth, names, anybody interested by then?
Okay.
It's the alternate.
Try to let us know by January thirtieth. Planning board, public hearing on February first, do we know what that's about?
I do. All right. Let's go to the next one.
Okay, office assistant posting is until February second for the land use. Budget deadline for departments and committees is February second. Super Bowl sledding is February fourth from ten to noon, I believe, they'll have soup and um other warm goodies. Ambulance bid will be out there till um February thirteenth.
Sorry, I was following along.
You can go ahead and read that.
Town of Acton, public notice, in accordance with Article Two, Section two point three of the Town of Acton subdivision regulations, the Acton Planning Board is scheduling a public hearing on Thursday, February first, at seven PM to discuss a proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations, as revised and adopted by the Acton Planning Board on September twentieth, two thousand and seven.
Upcoming meetings, the cemetery committee's meeting at five PM on the twenty-fifth. Budget workshop, um, that's us, right, Monday, the twenty-ninth at four. Board of Selectmen meet again at five PM on the thirtieth. And that is all. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor. Good night.